Issue Holly Hansard. Excuse me. We'll start off with a staff report.
I can't do two things at once. How do I get it off? The screen.
I see something starting, I guess that's...
Yeah. Well, I found how to put it on, I just can't find out how to take it off.
It's a picture of the world? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes. Jeremy, can you knock me off? Thank you.
We are technically challenged here.
Yes, we're learning new equipment.
Are you going to present your evidence? Is that what you're going to do?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do.
Maybe we should just waive the staff report and move on to statements for the appeal. And I guess that would be you, Ron. Should I swear people in or do we need to be that official?
We do need to swear in people.
Okay.
The staff report is the presentation, the 14 exhibits and the request for action.
Okay, so those are for the appeal then.
Yes.
Who is going to make a statement tonight regarding all of these matters? Is it you, Holly, and Ken?
Daniel Simon.
Daniel Simon, okay. If you'll stand, Ron, you're going to make a statement, is that correct?
That's correct.
Anybody else going to make a statement? Paul? Okay, if we all raise our right hands, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing, so help me God, that's all I know about it. You might, is that the short version that I got?
I do.
Okay, nothing but the truth. Okay. All right. First we'll go with Ron's statements for the appeal.
Jeremy, can you turn on this device?
I should say statements in support of the revocation.
Holly Hansard has applied for four fence permits at 211 Pine Street. The first is exhibit number one, and it was applied for on 1115, 2014. It sought, if you look at the exhibit that is attached to it, it sought to construct 70 linear feet of six-foot-high fence right here on the property line, and an additional 122 linear feet of six-foot-high fencing constructed here. What I want you to see is that the application specifically identified the type of construction. It was going to be one-by-six cedar fencing or steel hogwire panels. Exhibit one also includes the letter granting the permit dated March 12, 2015. I want you to focus on the fact that... When I zoom too far, how do I unzoom? Okay. No, that doesn't work. Okay, thank you. I want you to look at the letter which says, "The fence shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the approved plans on file." And it specifically says, "Six foot high, commencing 20 feet from Pine Street, within the property line and not on the property line." And on item number two, "The fence material shall be as proposed, one-by-six cedar or steel hogwire panels." Exhibit number two is a photograph that I took of that western sideline, the 70-foot line. As you can see, it is not constructed of one-by-six cedar fencing or hogwire panels. Exhibit number three shows the eastern portion, and it too is not constructed of the material for which the permit was granted. Want to identify one other item, and that is... The question about the height of the fence. We agreed to the 70-foot being at six-foot-high, but had some reservations about being on the eastern property line, it being six-foot-high, and we asked that 22 feet of the fencing adjacent to 323 Pine Street be limited in height. When you look at exhibit three, you'll notice that it was not limited in height. The March 26 letter specifically says that it would not exceed 48 inches in height from the face of the house at 323 Pine Street to the rear of the parcel. But exhibit number three doesn't show the reduction in height as required by the permit. Moving on to exhibit number four. This is the second permit that was requested. This permit was requested on 429, 2015. It asked for 60 feet of fencing, six foot in height, and you'll notice from the diagram that it was along the western border of the property. This is the alley that's owned by the city. Pine Street would have been in this location. There's also a diagram showing that the fence was going to be constructed, combination of redwood two-by-four, a metal panel, a copper axlet topping the fence. On May 11, 2015, this permit was granted, but once again, paragraph two says, "The fence material shall be as proposed per the plans submitted." Because of the not wanting to trespass on the property, I do not have a photograph of that particular property. It's shown here a bit on exhibit six as just one post and a part of the side, but you'll notice that there is no copper axlet, there is no redwood two-by-fours. Exhibit number five is the third permit that was applied for. It was applied for on 615, 2015. The permit had a diagram attached to it, and was asking for 60-foot along the southern boundary, and then an additional 40.42 feet here, adjacent to, I believe, 324 Broadway. This time the permit was asking for fencing that was galvanized roofing materials only. And there was a discussion about the materials, but ultimately we issued on August 19, 2015, an approval of that, provided that it was, once again, as submitted, a six-foot fence made of metal or wood. The exhibit number six shows you those two fencing pieces. And if you notice the rocks on the bottom here, what has happened is an effort on the part of the property owner to change the grade after the fence was built because the fence exceeds six foot in height. Finally, exhibit number seven is the fourth permit. It was submitted on August 25, 2015. This permit sought a number of different fences. It once again asked for the fence on the eastern boundary, asked for four-foot of fence from 20-foot setback to the road right-of-way, sought a gate here, sought additional fencing here, and on these two locations. Now, this permit was only partially approved. We granted the 46-foot portion, and it's marked with an "okay." We granted this portion, it too is marked with an "okay." We granted the permit for the four-foot height to the city right-of-way, but we stated in red that this site was too tall, this site was too tall, and there was a request here for a shade structure. It was identified as a medical shade arc, and we said that it was too tall. In fact, it's a structure and required a building permit. So the letter went out approving in part, and we followed up, asking that she come in to speak to us about the remainder that did not get approved. We, in fact, sent her a second notice on October 23, 2015, and told her that we still needed to talk about the remainder of the request for permit four that had not been But the property owner did not come in to talk to us, but simply went ahead and constructed anyway. The shade arc structures, which were building structures and required a building permit, went from one to three, as you can see in this photograph, which is exhibit number eight. And the fencing that we said was too tall on the north side of the property got built anyway, even though a permit was not issued. The council went forward on October 12, 2019, considered the adoption of ordinance 440-2017, an ordinance amending the municipal code as it regulates fences, hedges, and walls. During discussion, the council expressed concern about the safety of metal fences that were not complete. You discussed sharp edges, the possibility of pieces flying off due to the fence not having the final intended bracing and support, and you directed the staff to address that issue. Following consultation with the city attorney, I wrote to Ms. Hansard and one other property owner that had outstanding permits for metal fences but were not complete. Exhibit number 10 is the November 6 letter to Ms. Hansard, where we instructed them to complete their fence within 90-day time period, so that we would not have an unsafe situation. When the other property owner did complete his fence within the 90-day time period, but when Ms. Hansard did not, we sent her exhibit number 11. And we wrote to her, again, it's dated February 12, 2018, advising her that we would take action to revoke her outstanding permits. The only thing that we are requesting of the council this evening is a revocation of the permits. We are not asking that the property, that the fence come down, we're not asking that it be modified at this point. If the council wants to move forward with additional enforcement action, then additional notices, provisions for opportunity for hearing needs to go forward, such as what we do with a nuisance. We have not given her any notice of our intent to do anything to the fence, other than simply asking her stop building at this point. Now, the reason I've given you the photographs, and I've informed you that the... that the fence was not built in conformance with at least three of the permits, and that a portion of the fence was not built without, with any fence at all, is because I was simply anticipating a defense. I expected the property owner to say, "90-day time period is not, was not an adequate time period, and she should have been given additional time." Essentially, she has challenged the 90 days. I wrote her an email on February 12, and that's exhibit number 12, which basically told her that the 90-day limit was really set by the council's conversations at the time you adopted 440. With exhibit 13, I tried to explain that it was because of safety reasons that you had, and that is why the length of time was chosen. But we asked her, "What do you think is a reasonable period of time?" And exhibit 14 was her answer, "I need at least five years or no time limit." Well, she has been building this fence for three years. The first permit was issued March 12, 2015. So what she's really asking you for is a total of at least eight years to construct the fence. Fence is not difficult to construct, it's not like you're building a building. Recently, you looked at an ordinance on amortization, and you just said that the amortization time period for a fence that's legally adopted, legally put in with proper permitting, and didn't meet the requirements of ordinance 440, would be 10 years. You have the right, if you wish, to give her another five years, so she has eight, and then her 10 years will start running from the time she completes her fence, so she'll have had it 18 years, but we consider that to be unreasonable. Now, when someone comes before a judicial body, and this is a quasi-judicial action that's in front of you today, so you're acting like judges, there was in the law a division between courts of law and courts of equity. And when you were asking for relief from the specific provisions of an ordinance, you were asking basically for equitable relief. In the rules in regard to equitable relief, our court system has said, "You have to be acting in good faith." It's called the clean hands doctrine. So if a reasonable amount of time should be granted, then she should have acted in good faith, and building the fence in a way that was not approved by the permits basically is not acting in good faith. So the only reason I presented the pictures and told you about the failure to complete is not because I'm trying to get you to take action to either remove the fence or to require her to modify it in some way. I'm just saying that she hasn't really earned the right to ask for additional time. When the rules change, in this case they did, while her permits were in hand, an individual who has a valid permit issued before the change has a right to complete their work under the existing permit. But the question before you is, how long should that right to violate the current law exist? And we think that she has been given a sufficient time, so what we're asking for is that her permits be revoked under the ordinances of the city. We're not asking for anything further than that. She has been gaining assistance from a Mr. Daniel Simon, who is an engineer, and he has asked if we would sit down and try to resolve the issue. And once the permits are extinguished, either by a voluntary giving them up or by revocation by council's action, and construction stops, then we're more than willing to sit down and talk to the property owner about how we can resolve the conflict to bring her in line with city ordinances. That completes our presentation.
Sorry. We'll move on to those that want to keep the fence intact, so I suspect that... Who wants to speak in favor? Five-minute break? What's the specific reason? What does the council feel? You want to move forward, or you want to take a break? No? Okay, we'll go with a three-minute timer and come back prepared. And come back prepared to stay on topic, please. No, there won't be any, it's my meeting, it'll be fine. Nobody knew you were here. Nobody, nobody knew you were here.
And that was, what, yesterday? Twenty-four, twenty-six?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that the people that are supporting this are in the spirit of the yard.
Are we, I'll call the recess over, and are we ready? Are we ready, Holly?
Ready or not, here I am.
Oh, okay, hold on, thank you.
Am I allowed to ask anybody questions at this time, including the engineer, Paul, or whoever? Is that allowed, is that the formal right to?
Um, is that correct protocol to make? Yeah, we'll allow it as long as we don't get out of control with it, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me the right to cross examine my accusers, or not accusers, I guess. I would like to know of the city, do you have proof of service of some of those letters that have been presented in evidence? Because some of those letters, for example, the October fifth one, I never received where it said second notice. I, I've never received that, except for I heard it at the city planning commission. That was the first time I ever brought to my attention. May I ask of the city clerk, or the, the city council, if there's evidence of a proof of service of that notice?
Did we send our letter certified? Did we?
Well, I would like to see the proof of service of that one, sorry.
We will, we'll present all of that later. Actually, we're not here about the, we're here about your statements in rebuttal of Ron's fourteen statements of some sort.
Correct, and that was one of the statements.
Okay.
All right, so, as you might imagine, it's difficult for me to go through all those fourteen. I would ask to meet with Paul and Ron to discuss this time, and I'd like more time to consider the evidence point by point against me as presented fairly. I would like to be able to have this in fairness, as I've requested in the past. In the meantime, I'd like to ask Paul Martin, our city building inspector.
Hold on, Holly, in reference to the fourteen points that Ron presented, those are the same fourteen points that were also presented at the planning commission. So in order for you to say that you're not prepared, when this is at least the second reading, and you have the paper documents, i- is, is a little bit much, but go ahead and ask your questions.
No, it's honest, because I'm not prepared, because I've been in shock ongoing. Thank you, your honor, not, or your honor, sir, mayor, however, I don't know what office you are.
It's fine.
Mayor, all right, sir, thank you. Paul, if I may ask of you, in all goodwill, I ask you, have I been communicative with you during these past, since you've been hired, generally? Thank you. Thank you. If I might also ask of the building inspector, to the best of your knowledge and belief, do you have cer- certain, or have you discovered, or you discovered things as a building inspector that you didn't quite know as a previous builder, such as, for example, that building inspectors have a lo- a certain amount of, sometimes wiggle room on certain things?
There is gray area in my, in my career path, yes, there's gray area in termination of the codes.
You discovered that, right. So as part of that, have you, do you recall the possibility of either telling to me or to another Bull's Fire survivor builder, you know, after the Bull's Fire rebuilding, that there can be onsite, this is before the four forties, two thousand and seventeen, a change of up at the materials? For example, the fence permit number one, where Ron, where the city manager showed the sample of where I did something allegedly egregious of using metal. So, for example, to help clarify that question, I recall at the time I had railroad ties put in with the help of a kind person named Chuck from the Volunteers, and my own self continuing before and after that. And I had hogwire temporarily, but at a certain point, when the metal seemed more beautiful, it was before the big coup à against it, I recall asking you, and you may or may not recall this, if it'd be okay to change it up, and as I recall, on the spot, you said it was fine. Do you recall anything of that nature?
I vaguely recall that.
And that's something you might have, could have done in the field?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, that's a really open ended question, because it really depends on what the change is.
Yeah.
But I, I, I vaguely remember a conversation, something like that.
Right, and to the best of your knowledge and belief, since I began that, you have, never have I received a letter from you or your office telling me to stop building on that, with that metal, save for when I receive that ninety days to complete, or my fence won't be amortized. I mean, I don't personally recall you disapproving of the change of material in that point, the metal right there by the lay oceans and by the grasses, now the abbeys. Is, am I correct in that most likely I did not, well, actually, I don't, didn't receive a letter? Do you recall sending me such a letter or telling me no?
No, with the change in materials, no, I don't remember sending you a letter. And at that point in time, in our relationship with the fence building, my sole focus, and is to this day, the height issue, as we've discussed many times. That's been my focus.
Okay, great, great, thank you. So have you also, by the way, noticed, just in general, as far as being a potential nuisance, that I have painted all of my fences that are exposed to any neighbor with a attractive barn red or Manzanita bark red? Have you noticed that in general?
Yes, I've noticed that.
Thank you. Please take note of that, city council. Okay, so, so with regards to one of the points of evidences, and you, that Ron Stock presented one of those fourteen, I, I'm fortunate, I can't say exactly which one at this point, and his statement. I have indeed completed my fence, and I've completed it within the ninety days that I was given. I have a postmarked envelope from November twenty-seventh. I wanted to ask Paul, do you remember, do you possibly recall that, that one time someone, you told me that somebody told you that I had completed my fence, because I wondered why I didn't get the letter in the mail? And then, do you recall that?
I don't, I don't remember that, but I can, let me just throw this right out. The reason you didn't get the letter with the other fence property owner who had the same fence issue is that I dropped the ball. I didn't give you that fence letter because I, I dropped the ball.
Okay, so I, so if people can understand that I received, posted a letter about the ninety days on November twenty-seventh, although prior to that time, in goodwill and good faith, I was putting frames, extra purchase of wood to frame it, because I saw that your intention was to make no metal panels straight. So I, I framed the side of my fence that would be looking to, where Pine Street could see with extra cost of metal and wood. And since I received that notice, I worked like heck this winter, and in goodwill and good faith, and I completed my fence primarily in the cedar that I painted that dark Manzanita barn red color. And I completed it on the due date, and I have not built anything since then. There's no reason to make some order to keep me from building more, because I am done. Aside from, as I told the city, the grading and the retaining wall. Thank you very mu- much for Paul. Now, now if I could ask the engineer here, Daniel, is, is to your best of your knowledge and belief, as far as California city, California state building code, and what you've surveyed, and what's been brought to your knowledge, I know you could answer this too, Paul, but thank you. Is, is there any requirement for a permit for a retaining wall four feet or less?
Oh.
Oh, oh, sorry.
I'll let this work.
No, you guys all step aside, sorry.
Yes, please.
So is there a requirement, with California building code, there are exempt items such as one hundred and twenty square feet or less, retaining walls not over four feet, water tanks on grade, five thousand gallons, sidewalks and driveways. There's no permits required, that's the California residential code, section one oh five point two, it starts out work exempt from a permit. And there's also another interesting thing about fences not over seven feet high. So that's the residential code, no permit required. If that's your, okay.
So I was just asking about the retaining wall and that, thank you. And, and Paul, would you concur with that, that generally retaining walls inside properties, within the side of someone's property, you know, not on somebody else's property, four feet or less generally does not need to be engineered? Or, you know?
A retaining wall from the bottom of the footer to the top, no more than forty-eight inches, does not require a permit.
Thank you, and we've had that discussion many times, and I, I built accordingly everything that I've done and have planned to do, thank you, with step ups and these things.
Can I add to that, though?
Yes, you may, sir, thank you.
So, that's a retaining wall, stand alone retaining wall. When a fence is attached to the top of it, or physically attached to the side to continue the elevation, a fence permit is required, in my opinion.
Right, and you, you did mention that to me, I learned that for the first time, first information, because all along I've been saying, as you recall, Paul, building inspector, sir, if, if there's a need for me to get a permit for a retaining wall, I'm more than happy to do it. Oh, no, I don't need it, I don't need it. And so my fences are completely independent of the retaining wall, in that I set them in the ground first. However, I did build a retaining wall around them, and they are there, but if we were to cut the fences down, the retaining wall would be fine. And the fence does not, you know, the fence itself, the fence stuff, isn't like into the retaining wall, aside from what I built around, which was the, the four by four, because I wanted it strong to withstand wind, as I understand it, that was an issue of the city council as well, for, is not to blow over it in the wind, thank you. again, the proof of service. With regards to the fence permit with the, I believe it was fence permit, gosh knows, number two, or exhibit number, any, one of exhibits one through fourteen, with regards to the copper and the metal, I find it curious that Ron didn't realize that the city alley went further, and he could have easily taken a picture, where I do have the copper and the metal. And I found it interesting that in the planning commission meeting, he had a different take or a different story than this one. So I, I would like time to be able to transcribe that prior meeting and this meeting, and perhaps have the comparison. That would be fair, but nonetheless, I think that, Paul, maybe I could ask you, do you recall that area of my fence where I do have that hammered copper thing in the redwood that's turned gray since?
This is by the
By the Deval's vault.
Correct.
Right, uh-huh.
I, I, yeah, I recall that, yes.
Yeah, and personally, I think it's a rather attractive area of my fence, and recently I did paint the shinier aspects of that. So just for the record, that one is completed, done, there's really no issue of retaining walls or height or anything there. Other areas of my fence, I don't have a fence, my neighbor has the fence, Michael Miller, and I just have these like panels, and at one time there, I think Paul commented on how attractive it was there, on the inside of Michael Miller's northern side, what have you. I don't know, do you recall one time walking down my property there and seeing those panels attached to a redwood, and Mike's fence, Michael Miller's fence was behind it, and there were some trees there, and it was actually interior panel wood that I got for a good price via my son?
I don't remember that conversation.
Oh, okay, well, anyway, that part I recall, and that's all right if you don't remember it, thank you very much. With regards to the three two three Pine Street, I'd like the city council, thank you, to realize that three two three Pine Street house had burned down in the Bull's Fire, like many houses, like my house. And pre- prior to the fire, I was struggling to rebuild my fence, since Mister Linville at three two three, Alfred Linville died, and then new people owned it, and the family had done a new survey. And, and there was trouble there that I had with that neighbor and different issues there. But since then, they sold the property to the abbeys. But after the Bull's Fire, as I recall, there wasn't a house there to judge where the face of the house was, so in one of these exhibits, Ron Stock said, city manager, something, something about she was told to do it not, you know, four feet from the face of the house. Well, that was prior to the fire, and after the fire, there wasn't a house, and so I was told, as I understand it, by Ron Stock city manager, that twenty feet from the city was, the street was sufficient, and there's no house there, and, and that's what I did, four feet, and then it went up six feet. So I believe that that first, you know, okay, there's a twenty feet, it's four feet, and then it goes up to six. At that first, when it begins six feet up to where there's questions with regards to my retaining wall, is, there's no question on that, anyway. I, I don't, I'm really not asking a question so much as that, that I'm making an assertion that there's something askew about the statement that I did something wrong there with regards to the house at three two, whatever it is, three two four Pine Street, because the house wasn't there to judge anything when I built the fence there, and I was given a okay, according to my knowledge and recollection, that I was okay there. And that is primarily cedar there now. With regards to what Ron Stock showed in one of the exhibits with the yellow lines of Paul, as I recall, those yellow lines were done significantly, significantly after the permit was done. I'd never saw them, as he was just trying to figure out, okay, where's the things too fa- fa- tall, and where's it too short, too tall to this, you know, in his estimation. But according to that, the area primarily in question, as I recall, is the area to the north of what I'm calling the medicinal shade art. No need to go against federal law for that, or state law, I believe, but, and, humor? Sorry, in all seriousness. And so that area, Paul has, has said is too tall, and we've been in discussion with that. And so that's an area that I would love to be able to go on site to measure with Mister Morton and the engineer, and come to a, hopefully a consensus of what needs to be done, or, or what has been done that's satisfactory, you know, by the time you get out there. As the engineer discussed, that perhaps we could have, without my fence permit being revoked tonight, because I'm afraid that you guys are gonna force me to take the metal off eventually, and I like the way it looks, and I put a lot of work into it. So if we could have allowance of time to, perhaps two weeks for Mister Mor- for me to do a design of all where the fences exist on the property now, I'm not building anymore, I haven't built anymore since February, I, I'm done with it, finished. I've been given permission to paint, to move dirt, and to finish retaining walls, and I've done that, and I still need a little more paint. But if we could get, come to those areas and measure that and see if there's any remedy within, I could have that written down within two weeks, and then you can come out there within, shortly after that, whatever's convenient for you or the city, and then we can come up with a viable, real life plan with the neighbors involved, including the Lawries, who are in agreement with me, they're not in opposition to me in working with what needs to be done there. And, and other locations, such as the abbeys, where you could come out and measure, I believe that I have it at six feet right now, I have brought in, I have some, the ground level on my side is perfect, and the abbeys don't have an issue with that, according to my, their statement to me yesterday. They're fine with everything there, they will enjoy the shade this morning. So there's no harm to my immediate neighbors in every location, so if the city would honor here my request to hold off on the revoking of my fence permits, and give it back to the planning commission for perhaps the next month, or later, if and give it back to the planning commission for perhaps the next month or later, if you give me more time to do the remedies that Paul would recommend, such as bringing in the compactable, or not compactable, but the fill one way or the other. If the city would be willing to free Paul's hands up to work with me and with the engineer in consultation with as far as the elevation and the grading, let me ask another question here. Does grading need a permit? I understand that Mr. Palafini's son asked that question during the planning commission meeting. Paul, to the best of your knowledge and belief, does the city have a grading permit for my, type of work that I'm doing at my house?
The building code states that the authority having jurisdiction can make that decision. I have decided that, no, as long as there's not a tremendous amount of material moved, if it's a small amount, then no permit is required. However, I need to keep an eye on it, because if it's going to affect the neighbors downstream or whatever, then I have to step in.
Right. And do you remember, I was having a conversation recently about the way, what I've done to be aware of the top soil and different soils not going to my neighbors at every location?
Yes, we had that discussion.
Can you mention in brief what that discussion was?
Well, it was just about controlling the water going off your proposed home. And because you are, you are on the high side, you are on the top of the hill, if you will, and my concern is drainage onto your neighbors and how we could, we could create a French drain and, or something to that effect.
Yeah. And did you, do you recall our conversation on the DeValt's side, on the west side of my property, that little small retaining wall I have in there and the rocks and the trench I dug and had the Moore's Pit rock dug in that trench? And you mentioned about the cloth?
Yes.
Can you explain that a little bit, please? Just in brief, just our conversation that that did happen, right?
Well, we had a discussion. I was concerned about the drainage going into the vaults, because that was an issue before.
Mm-hmm.
And you showed good faith in putting, I don't remember what it's called, but you put some water blockage there. And then I do remember telling you that, be careful with what you do there, because that's city property.
Yeah, absolutely, and I have.
And I didn't want you to do any more.
Right. Well, on my property, never mind the city alley, I have absolutely dug like a two-foot deep hole or more, filled it up with Moore's Pit rock drainage, and then grabbed a whole bunch of the church rock that I sifted through over the past few years. And I have a very good drainage situation there. At one time, I was going to build there on the top. So, just naturally, the water will flow in that direction. But I have plans and have implemented them to have the least amount of drainage on any of my neighbors' properties. Excuse me, Ron, if I may ask you also, do you remember from the planning commission meeting that when Mr. Palafini, Paul Palafini asked you if a grading permit was required, what your answer was? And how?
No.
Okay, thank you. And do you also recall that you mentioned that, something about my property and how that would be that you weren't concerned about it at this time with regards to what I was doing there in my five-gallon buckets at a time?
I have no current recollection of that.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. Yeah. So basically, I think I'm good on the grading. I mean, I think, Paul, would you concur that I'm okay on my drainage, let's put it that way, at this time? And in the back, let's just say.
I honestly don't know, because we haven't had any real weather.
Well...
But I will give you the bit of the doubt and say yes.
Right. And the real weather...
But I honestly don't know.
Right. And the real weather that we had two years ago, when we had real weather, that inspired me for this, and there hasn't been any...
Right. But this, yeah, that weather happened prior to a lot of your materials that you've brought in.
Right. But it didn't happen prior to the little small retaining wall in the back, but for your information, that's all right. Thank you very much. And again, if you, if the city council will allow this two week for me to get the plans written down of the landscape proposal and the fences, and then have Paul come out there, then he can give a more current analysis of, you know, if you're willing, if you have time to, of that drainage issue, which I think is not an issue.
Well, I'm going to defer that to my superiors on how that's handled.
Okay. Absolutely. So, also, with regards to the points of evidence against me, this is a little bit of a side note, but my neighbor, without my solicitation, went out there last week. And if I could present this to the city council as part of the evidence of at least one person who is in support of the appearance of my fence, and if the council would allow me to have, present 200 signatures in support of my fence at a future date, please give me that permission and we can do that. May I submit this to you as part of my evidence today?
Yes.
And that lady's name is Amanda Lins, and she lives at 336 East Lake Street. And I was not out there when they went out there.
Is this a neighbor who drove to the property?
No, but she drove out there, and she said basically if she owned some property, she would love the same kind of fence. Now, there's a party in this room that has a similar kind of fence as I, but I think that you are all aware of the DeValt's fence. Are you aware of the DeValt's fence?
We're aware of the DeValt's fence, but we're not talking about the DeValt's fence.
Okay.
We're talking about your fence.
Well, that's fine. So just to let you know that I am not the only one who has a metal fence. And personally, I am so grateful to have a fence, and I'm grateful that other people are able to build or have built their fence. So if the city council will hear me, as you are listening, and truly hear me, my fence is completed. It has been completed since February. It's, the idea of putting some restriction or revoking my fence permit is silly, but Paul has not felt, is this correct, at liberty to approve, finalize my fence permit in time because of the grading, because of the retaining wall?
That's not correct. That is...
The height, as it appears, okay, let me...
The grading has nothing to do with it.
Okay, let me put it this way. Because of the appearance...
Holly, Holly, would you repeat that first phrase for me, please?
Okay. "I completed my fence to the best of my knowledge and belief, in good faith, within those 90 days as it was given to me. Through hell and high water, this winter, freezing cold, I did it. Yes, the city didn't expect me to do it, but I did it. Praise God, I did it. And I let the city know. However, I said, 'I am finished except for,' I called it the elevations, 'except for the grading,' that's the proper term, 'and the retaining walls.' As of today, I have a list of, and I spoke this to Daniel, that I'm 99% done with this fence permit retaining wall, X amount on this one, that one. In fact, one of the council member's son recently bought a house across the way, and they saw me working out there. And I, that one, I'm just 99% done with that retaining wall. I was under the impression at that time and the belief that when I was done with it, that the retaining walls, in all sincerity, was not part of the completion of the fence. So I did, so I understand with all due respect that Paul could not, I mean, I came to understand that Paul could not in good conscience approve my six-feet-or-less fence until he could see it physically as six feet or less. Is that correct?
That's correct. And of course, the magic word here is from original grade, and that's to my best ability, back to a bit of a gray area there, not being involved in the city before the Bull's Fire. I have to estimate that grade, and I'm very confident where that grade is.
Thank you. And so am I in some areas.
And it's nowhere near what you have done.
Well, if you speak about the Abbeys in that one location, but there is many locations where it is very close, right? We shot elevations. Ron Stock and city attorney or whoever, excuse me, Ron Stock if he, or maybe Craig, you didn't get sworn in, but, Ron, if you could ask me, I mean, not ask me, sorry, if I could ask of you, do, to the best of your knowledge and belief and recollection, did anyone in any department of the government shoot elevations, builders' level, both before the cleanup and after the cleanup?
I'm not, I'm not able to answer that question. We have historic data. We have assessor's records. We have other, we have photographs. There are great variety of ways in which to determine what the original grade was. If you're asking if we have done that, we have not, because that's not an issue here.
Well, thank you very much.
In fact, Holly, I'd ask you a question. Why are we here?
That's a good question.
Why, no, why for 120 days have you argued that the permits have to stay in place and you have to have the right to continue to build, when today, for the first time, you say you've fully completed?
Well, I don't...
Why, why come in and talk to my staff three or four times a week? Why do hundreds of pages of materials, all to fight, if you have completed the fence, submit the... You could have simply said, "I'm finished."
I have, I have, I have.
And given up the permits. Why didn't you? And given up the permits. Why didn't you?
Complied completely, I don't care if it's ninety five percent, it needs to be hundred percent with what was given, that's what rules are for. So, I'm not in favor of doing anything but revoking. Because the solution to give more time, time and resources have been given for this situation, and I think we have to focus on more things as a city. I, again, I spoke personally, and I'm sorry for the issue, but tragedies happen to everyone, I'm so sorry for that. But then you have to move on and not be keeping appealing because you don't get your answer, and that, and that's what I'm hearing.
Well, I, I, I just have to agree with Bob. It, it hurts so bad to sit here and tell somebody that they had to take their fence down a foot on a corner when you could see through it in order to comply with the ordinance. And, and we've watched over the last three years, the height of a level property get bigger and bigger and bigger, and we've seen a flag on top, and we've seen a building, and we've heard from the neighbors about the glare, and, and every time, we've gotten an excuse. And, and I understand, Daniel, you're working in good faith with her, but you just got here three weeks ago, and you don't know everything that has happened, and what's been said, and she's been given time, and then she, and she agrees, and then she does the complete opposite of what Paul tells her, obviously, or the, the fence wouldn't be the way it is right now. So, I am not willing to give any more time.
Holly, you need to be quiet, or you can leave.
We let you speak, now it's our turn. Like I said, if I'm gonna make somebody who already has their house built, and who already has their lawn scaped, and who already has their fence done, lower their fence by one foot, then there's no way I'm gonna allow a ten-foot fence with a four-foot retaining wall, or however big it is. It's too tall, and bringing dirt in to make it enough, or make it shorter, is not the answer.
Well, and a statement was made that we were against it because it was metal, and that was not ever the case, because we did decide that that was okay.
I wish I'd have done one like that.
I know, so, so at one point in this last two hours of my life, um, we have, somebody said that metal was the issue for us, that was never the issue. Now, I might not like it, but it's not my fence, so, but it's, and I actually don't mind it, in the big picture. So, metal is not the issue. What was said, and I wrote this down, and I'll put little quotes, "I'm done with my fence. My fence is a hundred percent complete, so, there's not a problem with revoking the four permits, because you said that you were done with your fence, so if your permits are taken away, then you're not gonna, it's done." So, I don't have a problem with it either.
So then we would need to direct Paul to do the final, if it's done, correct?
I can't final it in good conscience, it's too tall.
Well, but those will be your findings of doing a final.
Right, and that's a direct.
Yes, that would be your findings, yes.
Can I speak for just a moment? I, I need to get something off my chest, maybe just for me than anybody else. Holly brought up a good point, and she talked about not red tagging the fence. I can tell you the reason I didn't do that, I was very hopeful we could come to an agreement, and I gave her as much grace as I possibly could, that is the reason for that. It was probably a mistake, because we're all here, I could have made your life easier. I'm a three-and-a-half-year inspector, uh, I'm learning on a daily basis, I'm trying my hardest, I do make mistakes, that was one of them.
Well, and thank you for doing that, because we have all been, I mean, you know, since September of 2014, we've all been trying to give people the benefit of the doubt for everything. I mean, you can let your dog run free, and we'll look past it, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject something, Mr. Mayor? Regarding to Paul, our inspector, um, I appreciate your honesty and your realness, but I want to be clear, I've witnessed you in, in-house, doing something regarding to marijuana, a, a client or a resident, and you have showed compassion, so I don't want you to derail yourself from your abilities and knowledge and your sensitivity, because I've seen it in that issue, and I've seen it in others, so I want people to know that he's saying that he has been in three and a half, may not know all the rules, but I can tell you what I've observed was clearly professionalism, and even stated by the person here that we're talking about, they stated how, how kind the person is, I want you just to know that, because that, because that means a lot.
That's true.
Yeah, and it is true, I agree with that also.
I also appreciate the fact that you're donating your time, we don't make a lot of money doing this either.
I don't really have any, Mr. Mayor, other than I, I, I think it's obvious that we, we need to move on, and I, hopefully, that, uh, uh, in, in the next few weeks, that, uh, if you're gonna continue this, I think that getting Mr. Simon and Paul together, and maybe, uh, we're, we're, something's gonna get resolved. This, obviously, is not resolving anything, we're going round and round, and, uh, that, it's not, nothing's been resolved, we just, we just add it on to, so, my, I'm, my, I am totally in, uh, I totally believe that the permit needs to be revoked, and I don't think that, uh, if you need a motion for that, are we at that point yet?
Pretty close.
Okay.
I would just like to make one statement, that I, I'm at City Hall on a fairly, fairly regular basis, probably not as regular as I need to be, but I, I have seen, been at City Hall fairly continuously. I think our staff has gone way beyond reason in handling this measure. We have take, she has taken up time to, from the staff, to review plans, requesting inspections, talking about hardship, requesting records, requesting hearings and appeals. She's also taken up the council's time for over two years, and has made hundreds of others wait to make a statement regarding an issue so that she can expound the redundancy of her plight. So, I'm not feeling very warm and fuzzy, and that's just my take on it. So, what does the council feel the position should be? Let me ask the staff question, we revoked permits. What's the next step?
If we're unable to get compliance with the lowering of the fence and the completion of, of the inspection by the building inspector, our next step would be to come forward and start a, a process of abatement with, uh, probably following the nuisance statute, seeking to get an order from the council authorizing us to either modify or remove the fence. Probably, in this case, it might be a modification.
May I ask a question along with that? How does compliance with the owner go with this nuisance abating, or the process to get to there? What are their responsibilities, since they haven't complied? And if we give them something else and they don't comply, what's the process or the interpretation of that?
Well, we'd be willing to meet with the property owner and with her representative in an effort to try to gain compliance voluntarily, but after a sufficient period of time, which will quite honestly depend upon, um, attitude and approach, but after a sufficient period of time, um, we would come forward and ask you to set a hearing on nuisance abatement. We would give notice, then, if you adopt a resolution determining that it's a nuisance and requiring that the modification occur. The property owner is given time, then, to comply with that order, and if they fail to comply with that order, we would then seek to, uh, enforce the city order by hiring contractors and doing the work, uh, and put a lien on the property for the cost of that. I haven't explored that with the city attorney, but he may suggest, in this case, that we actually seek a court order to enforce the council's decision to, to abate.
And my, my follow-up question is, previous behaviors has usually proven thing, when you look at other...
When you look at other situations in court, someone does something, I won't state specifics, but they're released and they go back and do something else. So, in this case, if behaviors have shown that there's no, hasn't been 100 percent compliance, how much would that factor going forward?
That's guesswork.
Well, if, if, you know, if someone builds without a proper permit, there is the ability to file criminal charges. Because doing so does violate the city's ordinances and there, there is a criminal penalty that can be imposed by the courts.
I'm just asking for the, the reasoning. And again, everyone who's listening, um, I'm, I'm, I'm sensitive. So, I understand the direction and the response that the city manager has given us. But I'm just looking at behavior of people usually presents the future. Once you've done something or your current behavior, your thought process, you usually do that again. Like, yeah, in certain crimes you can think about, you hear in the news, they're released, they do it again.
With the offenders.
Yes. So, I'm just being...
And I would just like to make the statement, if we give time, are we being realistic?
Well...
It's been two and a half years plus. This isn't, I mean, we're, we're at the final end of this. But she has involved the building department and staff time ad nauseam to try to, to manipulate what she wants versus what's in the building codes.
Or what was asked for in the permits? Or what was asked for in the permit, per, permits?
Right.
Which I asked for, the signature says, you'll understand, you'll do this, comply.
But they don't.
And that wasn't true.
It's, it's, even though she says the fence is through, finished today.
And it's not complete.
It is not complete because we can't sign off on it. I don't know where that disconnect becomes. And I don't know if we allow two weeks, if we allow four weeks. If, if that, that creates any benefit to anybody.
I, I think the only solution we have, and this is my personal feeling, is based on what you just said, I go back to the other two nuisance abatements that we've dealt with in the time that I've been up here. And that is a way for us to allow her to have time to correct all of these problems because it's filed and then she gets so many days to conform to the nuisance abatement, correct? And then it comes back to us and they say, yes, she is doing it or no, she is not. And then we make the decision, all right, it's taken care of and the nuisance abatement goes away or no, it hasn't been. And then we move forward like we did with the property over here and we go in and clean it up and do what needs to be done. But, but, but that does allow the homeowner the time to do what we're hearing tonight they want to do. But it has to be done, not what they want to do, but by the rules of what we have in our ordinances of what can be done.
You're, you're correct. Uh, the only difference between this and the other abatements that you've seen is that this one is not clearly health, safety. You have a little more authority in health, safety. And that's the reason I've suggested to you that the attorney may say, instead of, uh, the city simply going in and, and correcting, which we did in those two cases, after the property owner failed to complete the work, the attorney might for a cause, for caution purposes, seek a court order to support that.
But, but it does allow the homeowner the time to comply.
It does. You're right about that point. Yes.
Is, is there, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, a question you just brought up. Is safety still a question, one neighbor brought up the piece about the part of the metal. And that was my first concern when I heard about it. Is that still a concern regards of how secure the fences or whatever? Is that still a health concern?
Up to this point, we haven't had that concern. And Paul hasn't expressed it and he has done considerable amount of inspection on that area. It looks to be solid and well-built. And it should be able to withstand, um, the winds that we normally have within our area.
I mean, we have some pretty high winds. So, we're talking, will that wind shear hold up?
Well, let me speak to that a little bit. Uh, first of all, I am not an engineer. I'm going by experience and common sense. Uh, I was asked well over a year ago to go to these fences and, um, ask permission to go onto the property and take a look how it was fastened and just double-check to make sure the fastening systems were adequate, in my opinion. I will tell you, Holly had a very good fastening system. I don't have any problems with the panel attachment to the posts. I haven't seen them, studied them for a year. They can back out a little bit, but generally they, it was, it was done well. I cannot speak to the wind loads and the ground snow load that may affect the pressures on those. I believe that fence should have been engineered because of the height. But, um, I believe it's fine. Uh, but there is that unknown because it's metal and if one blows off.
So, if we seek compliance for height, how would that, how would that work? Would it all have to come down to six foot at what level, to, to, to original grade?
In, in my opinion, I'm looking at this as original grade. Those are my marching orders until I'm told otherwise. Original grade is what I'm focused on.
Okay. So, we're talking about...
Substantial...
Substantial remodeling of those fence.
Lowering in certain locations. Others, not so much. Others, none at all. But substantial in some locations. I couldn't give you the, the footage because I haven't pulled my tape.
So, would the fence, the fence wouldn't be on a straight line. It would be kind of...
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah. It'd be staggered a little bit, potentially. But Daniel, I don't know if Daniel wants to speak to it, but, uh, there is a serious concern, potentially, if we ever get some good winters, back to our usual winters, the ground snow load and the wind effect, wind effect, that design criteria that we go by here, it's substantial. And I don't know how well those posts were put in. Yes, I did see some holes. I did look at some of those posts installed, but I honestly couldn't tell you if they were all done.
Because there's wind speed and then there's wind shear. Is that correct?
Well, there's, there's the design criteria of our, of our wind for, for buildings, for structures, 90 mile an hour, 103, three-second event. There's also a roof load, but that translates to a ground snow load, which affects the, um, the pressure on that fence. So...
And, and potentially the dirt that was brought in could be all run off at some point.
Well, it's, a lot of it is stone, not a lot of loose soil. A lot of it is stone, flat rock, flat stone.
How secure is that?
Relatively secure. It's impressive, to be honest with you. It's impressive. It's a lot of work.
Sadly, that's not why we're here, though.
No, not at all. I'm, I focus is on height and height only, based on original grade.
So, council, suggestions?
I think we're ready for a vote and how the vote comes.
Okay. So, what are we voting on?
The revoking of the permits.
Okay.
I believe, is that correct?
And then if we revoke the permits, further action will be held at another council. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, are, are, we are revoking all five permits?
I think there's four.
Four, excuse me, four permits.
Let me do this first. The hearing is now closed. Is that official? Does it have to be official? I don't know. You guys get, you, you didn't give me my instructions here. I'm just winging it. Okay.
Is that, uh, so, we have four permits for this fence, okay, four separate permits. Okay.
And we're, we're considering the planning commission's recommendation to revoke.
Revoke.
We should state that and that, this is the format.
Could I speak for a moment? Is, are we going to, should we clarify what is fenced and not fenced because of the three medicinal shade art? That's, that's, that's a gray area in my mind as to how that's handled. Is that part of the, the revocation?
Was one of those four permits for that?
No, no permits for those.
So, we can't address it in this matter. We're addressing just what it says to revoke the four permits issued to her.
Okay.
If that's not in...
I, I think if those structures stand, we, we would take a separate action. Because if they're not in compliance with any building codes...
They are not.
They would have to be coming down too. But we're not addressing that issue tonight.
I just want to be clear in my mind, how to, what direction to go here.
So...
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we revoke said permits, one through four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show that none was opposed.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification?
Yes.
I'd like to add, we, again, what I said, we want in the motion have, can we add it to the motion, Mr. Paul? That we consider the planning commission's recommendation. That shows that steps and processes were taken. And here, so we were listening, so I think that need to be included in the motion.
Can we, do we need to make a separate motion on that?
To add the planning commission's recommendation.
To affirm this, the planning commission's recommendations. Okay. On to item, uh, B. Council will consider draft purchase agreement of property located at the corner of Shastina Drive and Blackview Drive. APN number, number 060-552-150. This is in regards, do we, I thought, are we gonna have this in open session? Last time we had it a little bit in closed session, so...
Yeah. Are we gonna do a closed session before we come out and do anything else?
We don't have anything on the agenda other than, uh, this is about the property adjacent to the motel for the conference center. Okay.
There are some things I'd like to tell you that I don't really want to make public.
Okay. So, we would like to go to closed session. I so moved that we go to closed session.
Second to reconvene after.
And we'll reconvene after. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed session it is. All we need is...